Let's go and get our work session started. It is a little after seven. This is our first budget together as a council. So today, what we're having to present to you are draft 2020 budget. Joanne's gonna lead the way. We've met many, many, many hours to go with this. She's done an amazing job. So if you have any questions, direct to Joanne and then I'll be filling in when I need to fill in. So, Joanne?
Wonderful. Well, this is my favorite time of year.
Yeah, we know.
So, what I'd like to do is just give an overview and then stop me where you have questions and then we'll delve into a little bit deeper. The first thing I'd like to start off with is the tax rate is gonna remain the same. No increases there. But we're exempt from the constant yield because we haven't grown enough to meet the criteria for when you have to advertise and all that if you change the rate. Because we haven't grown that much. Any municipality that has not increased revenue due to building, construction improvements or improvements, more than 25,000 is exempt. So we are exempt.
We're gonna have that worksheet for the public that we seem to have more or less than as exempt.
Yes. I have a packet that I'm going through tonight. Anyone who wants that packet, email Jim. I could put it on a Dropbox for you and then you can review it more in detail. So, we'll see how specific we, you guys did tonight and then from there, I'll give you that. And again, in back of the schedule, you saw that there were lists of meeting dates. The next one is May 2nd for the work session. And I figure that's when you guys will probably be more in depth on what some of your items that you would give me, all your questions or anything that you had in between. So we're prepared for the May 2nd and then we didn't really work it out. Okay? So, the tax rate stays the same. The trash is gonna stay the same rate for this year. Next year, we're gonna be looking to bid that out. We may go with, the mayor has some cost-saving details that he'll go into with you that may help with that. Local income tax, another. I kept at the same. The largest increase you'll see is the highway user revenue tax, based on the new legislation. That has went up. So that you'll notice there. And then rental license, again, they're based on three years for any of you that don't know, we break it out over the three-year period. Gaming and electronics, we had concerns about the bridge construction and whether that was gonna make a difference and impact our revenue negatively. Has not. I took the last three years, because anything past three years is worthless, and divided it and it comes to 350,000, but I left my number the way it was last year just as a, just in case, because it's gambling revenue and you never know what could happen. People could find God and not go gamble, I don't know.
They could jackbutt, Joey.
Yes, yes. And then you'll see that there's no change to the beach fees at this time. There's some things that are under discussion, changes on the waterfront. Again, as we progress through this process, the mayor will update you on those impacts. And the shirt shack, we finally have one full year of revenue and that's reflected in here based on last year's revenue where we're at. And the expenses are also based on payroll, which I have a detail on, which will be in the packet. Summer events, there's no revenue plan for summer events and there's been some changes to our scheduling of events and what events we have when, trying to make it a more progressive, all-around, all-year-long event. And the mayor will get into that too, because he's made some changes, progressive changes. And then, there's some minor things like, when we get into expenses for the general fund, mayor's operating expenses went up. There's some areas where his attention is drawn like Mako, MML, the fall and the summer legislative, we fall legislative and summer conference, plus Main Street, those things he wants to go to for economic development. And then, there was no coal raises in this budget for any employee. The feds are doing 2%. I think the state is doing 1.5% and we don't have anything figured anywhere. So if I'm going too fast, will you just let me know? Code enforcement, I don't know that I need to read all these items since you guys...
There you go.
Yes, know how to read and I pretty much...
I had to separate them.
I coded them by number for you so you can, other than color coding them, I didn't know what else I could make it any easier. General code, there's a new feature for general code for GIS mapping to make it easier when someone looks at the codes for the town of North Beach, where they're at and what that means to their property or the property that they're reviewing, whether it's commercial, waterfront district, whether you have tax, whether you don't have tax, blah, blah, blah. One of the biggest items is the new IT budget. And with that, the IT budget, Paul worked hard on this and it's managing to take most of our items and put it under one big line item, to get all of our technology together. That includes Wi-Fi, phone services...
IT support.
IT support.
Or access.
Yes, all these things that he has grouped under here, Ken. It's on the detail sheet that I have in my packet. Okay? And it's very detailed.
So basically what we're doing is we're grouping together anything that is basically associated with infrastructure, so all those things that Joanne has listed. Any individual software, like for example, the stuff used for code enforcement, that's still gonna be under their budget. But laptops and all the supportive infrastructure, that is now going to be under the IT budget because it's really just, it's across town, so it just makes more sense and brings it along with how other IT operations are managed.
Yeah. Some of the other features that the mayor has worked on is legal counsel and engineering to try to reduce those costs, but he'll get into detail on those items. And then, one of the ones I'm most proud of is the police and part-time police expense. I'm on page... Let me tell you the page, you know, one sec.
Forty-five. Forty-four.
Yep, forty-five.
Four hundred and fifty-five.
Forty-six, I think.
On the notes. It's actually on... It's on the notes, it's page down four. On the notes, but it's on page six in your budget, okay? Which shows you the comparison of what it was and what it's gone. And then, there's more information. Again, I'm not gonna read each one. I'm gonna engage you, but I just wanna go over this in general. The Plant the Town, which is item number 36, which is on page five, I'm jumping around a little bit, I know. Used to be American in blue, but now it's gonna be called Plant the Town and it's a revamp of that program. Really, it's just, it's changed, but it's redone in a manner that's gonna not cost an exorbitant amount every year. So, he has, the mayor has developed a plan with Stacy and with Green Street and that cost, you should see it going down as we go forward. As far as the general fund, the only other major items would be in the Public Works Department and in waterfront. The waterfront has a new John Deere vehicle, but again, I have the detail in the packet that I'm gonna give you access to. And that's a more industrial vehicle instead of the golf carts, which we had maintenance issues with the golf cart. This one is more facility vehicle. They do the trash and they do some other things on the beach. That's what that number represents. And then in the Public Works Department, there's two pieces of blowers equipment. One of them is a new leaf black, leaf vac system. My mouth is just not working right today. Anyway, the new leaf vac system. And then there's an item for the bulk material storage bins and this is the new program by the mayor and he's gonna give you detail on that as we move forward. And then there's another truck for the Public Works Department to replace one of the older ones that we have. And that's, I'd like to pause here and let, allow the mayor to give you any information that he feels that you need to know moving forward.
All right, so, I think you're gonna see as you get the, all the breakdown from Joe and so forth, you can click on the side icon, all this stuff that you're gonna see, that there's been a lot of effort to bring more value, continue to bring value to the residents. So, there's a couple of things. We have department heads that, if you have questions that you need to drill down, if you're not sure about something, get with the department heads. That's, that's, that's more important than anything else, so you completely understand why. There's been nothing that's on this list that has not been vetted or a conversation about, nothing. The whole part about the IT was to improve our service, though there's a dollar out there, it was always there, but now it's distributed and it's better. Wasn't like we increased it.
It was just other, it was, it was never broken out or whatever way, but we're getting
more service, better service. I really tasked him with a lot of stuff and he's done, I mean, he's kicked butt. He's taken names on this one. So, I think you're gonna see that. When we get down to legal and legal counsel and engineering counsel or cost, all I'm doing is if, we don't need Alyssa to drive from Baltimore to sit next to me, to sit next to me to get up at the end of the day, say goodbye to everybody and leave, then we're not gonna have her here. We're just trying to be more proactive on what we do. Now, obviously, there's things on agenda that she's needed, she's here, absolutely. Same thing with Paul, they're here. But that's not always the case. When we talk about the police, we just take a look at the breakdown, what we did. We just make better decisions, I think, on, on when and how versus just the, they gotta be there. We also, recently, how many pieces of equipment, Stacy, or do we sell?
Three.
Three.
Three, and we have another one out for the breakdown.
Right, so...
Put one back up.
We, we went through Public Works to find what equipment wasn't needed. And I think we're gonna try the same thing with the phone system, once we get the new phones in and, they're free, don't worry. And we saved, I made, we went to munis a bid and it's documented, it's tracked, it's bids, we can see we bid it on a dollar amount, but I'm amazed, I don't even know how much money we brought in, but it wasn't cheap. I mean, we brought in some good money. Those are the things that we're looking to as a town. What can we do better, more efficient, to get your job done? So I think you're gonna see that throughout this budget. But getting to this, you know, there's, she has 69 items. I think you're gonna find that it's detailed. Like, I don't think you're gonna walk away and go, man, what about that, man? Joe has done an amazing job, the department heads have done an amazing job to get their budget in, to explain why. Also, a budget is the maximum amount, doesn't mean it has to happen. Well, our goal is to be efficient as possible. And I think what you're gonna find is, is that this is a very clean budget, very clean. So, take a look at it, Joe's gonna continue. If you have any questions, if you think of more after this, remember we're gonna do it again. So, let's edit out. Joe?
Yes, okay, so that was the general section. And Greg, you weren't here for most of that. If you have any questions, I'll pop in there. The next section I'd like to address is sewer and water. And you may be aware, I know Greg was in the audience when we were discussing our conservation plan, there's a five-year plan to get us more in line with Calhoun County's rate structure, where you have a base minimum and then you only pay for the water that you use. In some cases, you're, you guys are probably mostly aware, we have some people who live alone, who may only use 2,000 gallons worth of water, but we have another family right next to them who may use 20,000 gallons worth of water. So, to make it more equitable, we're proposing, and we did propose, and that's what this rate change this year is again, part of that five-year plan, to continue to reduce the minimum charges and then increase the graduated charges so that it promotes conservation to our aquifer and also conserve our plant costs over at the wastewater treatment plant. So, I'm gonna get into this just a little bit now, now some people may have questions. This year in our five-year plan, this was the year that we went to 5,000 gallon minimum. Okay? So with the 5,000 gallon minimum, there are also increases to the rate structure to that, to help draw up that revenue. And in the packet that I have for you, it's gonna show you what that rate is. It shows you what the rate structure will be if you use a certain amount, so that you can see that's a rate chart. And then the letter that's gonna go out in the last quarter billing, which is beginning July, for FY19, explains to the residents who didn't participate in the public part of it, what their bill is gonna look like moving forward and why exactly. So we've included all that in the packet. So, the other, only other thing that we can talk a little bit about on this is the installation of flow meters, which we now have...
Didn't work out.
It will work out, though.
Will work out. We tried, we tried a flow meter at Chesapeake Dam and Palm Station, but it was on a demo and it didn't work. We, then we had the first, if it didn't work, we're looking at the first, if it didn't. Couldn't read through the plate for some reason, so.
Okay, so we're looking for an alternative, but there will be a flow meter at that station.
There is one now, but this, this is a newer upgraded model supposed to...
More accurate.
Right.
Okay. So, that will be part of it and that's part of our requirements with the plant as a partner. Again, as we go through this process, the mayor will update you on many changes that are occurring. And our relationship with Calhoun County is improving and how that's gonna affect us with flows moving forward and the costs to operate the plant. So, that's in here also. We still have the self-funded replacement of the wellhouse and the water meters, that's that $67,000 figure that you see in there. That's really the major changes to the water and sewer. So, it's, Mayor, do you want to provide any input for that one?
I will only say that we are addressing this and we've had multiple meetings with Calhoun County, we've had multiple meetings with Chesapeake Beach. I'm excited at the direction we're going. I think you're gonna see a lot of improvements and I don't know exactly what they will all be, but I do know that we will be working on an agreement that was signed in 1995 and we're gonna be improving every aspect of this. So, I think the residents are gonna like the change. I think the water structure, the way we're doing it, makes sense. I think people are gonna benefit from these changes instead of the flat fee of 10,000. I couldn't tell you how many people I spoke to that said, well, I don't use 10,000. Well, good, we got a new system that we've been rolling out. I think it's a win-win for the environment, for our residents and everybody.
Oh, you know what, I got a fun fact for you. You wanna hear a fun fact?
Absolutely.
A fun fact is, I'll tell you what Calhoun County is currently charging for their sewer flat rate. Their base rate for water, which is the minimum, is $55.51. Their sewer is $111.35. Their sewer, I mean, their water per thousand gallons for unlimited, whatever you use, is based on whatever you need in your home, is $2.74 per thousand gallons. The sewer is $5.91 per thousand gallons. And that has been in effect since June of 2018. But, that's what we're trying to get to, is just a flat structure so that everyone knows what things, can control what they spend. So, that's, that's my fun fact for that.
You're the must-act just to turn off the water when you're searching the beach.
Well, it's not just that and Don's put down a newsletter and we'll give you six suggestions on water-saving features that you can add to your toilets, to your showers. Those are the main core parts, showers, toilets, laundry utilities, so those are the main. So that's basically what I have for sewer and water. Now I'd like to get into the next section, which, no debt, no change in debt service, but in your little packet that I'm giving you, it has the when debts expire. And you'll see that there's a $227,000 annual debt service that's gonna expire in 2025. So that's a happy day. The next one, this is capital projects budget. That's on page 11 of this. And then it starts on, some of the notes start on, the next to the last page of your notes. Item 62 starts any notes we have on the capital budget project. This year, there's no new grants and the way I say that, maybe I phrase that wrong, we don't have any brand-new ones that we've just awarded. We were awarded them, but now we're getting ready to do the projects with them. So, 300,000 of the money that is shown here is in community legacy grants. 50,000 for streetlights down, the flower boxes, and then 250,000 for the water. So that, and then the 14,000 for the fascia area on the hospital center. And then the rest of it is stormwater projects, street improvements, roads and streets, construction, and then a couple new cameras, again, you have the detail in your packets or areas for that. So what we're asking for, an overview for capital, because you have capital, the fund itself unless it gets a grant, is 439,000 from the reserve fund, from the people's money to put back in the infrastructure. 300,000, we're getting from the grants and 14 is part of, is gonna be, we believe it's gonna be reimbursable.
I'm, I'm pretty confident.
Pretty confident. Kind of similar to what we did for the roof on the...
Yes.
You got payment on a third of that. Oh, did you go by the thing?
Yeah, the metal building.
Yeah, medical. Any questions on this particular page?
No, it's probably 439, eight, I think.
439, it includes, that includes the, we need an additional, we have a $50,000 grant for the streetlights and the flower boxes, but based on our estimates, it's gonna cost us another 50 in order to do it. I don't know if you've been here during the conversation, but I'll tell you anyway. The streetlights, those were given to the town from VGE a couple years ago, maybe it was six, seven years ago. And when VGE runs a pole, they do direct line. And I don't know if you know what that means. That means you've got a hot wire, runs through the ground, no conduit around, it runs up to the pole and there's no structure there to hold it. And you've noticed some of those have gotten weak and we put manners on them so they walk like flags, like this. So Donnie's gonna shore those up, that means pour concrete in our flower bed. And then we need to decide on the type of pole, something that matches what we've already done down there. So, that's why we already know it's gonna cost us more than $50,000. The other part of that, Greg, is the stormwater projects. There's 295,000 in stormwater projects. And the detail on those, let me try to detail all of them. If you give me one second, I'll tell you what they are. You don't need to watch me get through my mistakes all in here. Pretty sure 100,000 of that is cleaning out that pipe.
Yes.
Well, I wanna make sure I'm writing it right, I'll tell you, because Greg remembers everything. So I want you to tell them.
On the last page, under 65, it says 100,000 additional come. Mine's 100,000 clean the pipe.
There you go, yeah. There you go, Greg. I scared myself. I missed you, Greg. Okay, we missed that, I missed that, I had rage. How excited. Good job, Lacy. You spoke out of the time, I'll do it again. That's the detail.
So, can, you got it?
Oh, yeah, I, I, yeah. I got, I broke it, I got the numbers I had.
Yeah, I'm glad I'm better than that, yeah.
As y'all can tell, we're, I mean, between the pump house, the water meters, the, the storm drain, the Greenwood Avenue, we are investing into our infrastructure. And, I mean, it's needed. It's, it's time for it to happen. And also in the backend, I'm also working with, you know, we're working with Calhoun County, we're looking, we're still trying for grants, we're still, so, you know, I'm hoping to have a different tune to pass on to you in a couple months, but right now, I wanna at least plan for these so we can start getting some stuff done around here.
Okay, any more questions on that thing?
Okay.
Beautiful, beautiful. All right, the, if no one has anything on that, then they get your packet. I wanna move on to EDC. EDC, the only request in there was Abigail's and it was a $2,000 item for those, I don't know what you call them, if you know what they're called, those lights that go underneath the trees.
They go in the flower beds?
Yeah, that is.
Uplighting.
Uplighting, London's great myrtle.
We'll leave this up to Greg.
She, she doesn't, she doesn't care for, if you, if you read it, she doesn't care for the way they light. So she wants to order some new ones, which is $2,000. With that said, that's the general overview. I've given you some special notes on where, what comes from what. And then at the last page, it has our meeting schedule, which I think you've seen before, but I just wanna reiterate that our next meeting is May 2nd. So, Mayor, do you wanna close us out?
Well, before we open up the public comment...
Yes, and may, and council questions.
And council questions. Again, I cannot stress enough to get with the department heads, if you get a chance, you can shoot them an email, talk to them, they can explain in detail what the departments are looking for. I'm excited, I think we have a lot of items that we're improving, we're moving forward with, when it comes to the infrastructure, when it comes to IT, when it comes to the code and zoning. We are really making a lot of strides in this budget. We're pretty aggressive, but I think it's, it's time. So, if you have any questions, department heads are ready for you. So before we turn over to public comment, does council have any questions? I'm sure y'all will. I'm sure y'all will sooner or later, maybe not tonight, but any questions tonight before we open up the public?
Can you send me emails? I'll respond to everybody, so that everybody's getting the same answer, okay?
I have one right now.
Go ahead.
Blue recycle containers, some left at the shop, or?
No.
We don't have any blue large containers left at the shop now.
Do we think everybody's, like, that program runs course, everybody, every resident has one?
We believe everyone who's asked, we may have three out there we have not been able to meet the need of. But, to be honest, what we're finding is some of them are using them as trash cans instead of, you know, recycle bins. And then also, we probably, I don't know how we're going to do it, but maybe take an inventory or a survey or something to see who has retained there, you know, because we're mostly rentals and.
Yeah, I remember like they were.
Things disappeared.
They're assigned to the house.
Yeah, they're assigned to the house.
Yeah. That's why I just, I saw up to zero up here, curious.
So, you had any requests really lately either? Not many, very few.
Not many. They're, when Marcia tells them we're out, they're satisfied with getting the white. I mean, the yellow.
The yellow. We take two of those, most people aren't happy with that. Two of the ones that counted for us to the metro.
You still have the yellow ones?
We got, yeah, Calhoun County, you know, we need some of them, you can run out to the landfill and pay them off, and Cowabunga, that's all we want. No problem, like, the big ones is shipping on that. If you don't order a certain amount, shipping's out, baby.
You got to order a hundred at least.
Yeah, like, I remember like when we did it, we wanted to buy bulk, and it was like four gallons square.
Right.
And we all wanted to do a hundred.
You don't meet certain tiers, you don't get the discount. And two, you have to look into, we both recycle every week.
Yeah.
Every week, so, one of those yellow ones would do it. If someone's, you know, with a natural recycle, like, oh, he fills his toe every week.
I do, I fill up every week.
I know you do, I know you.
Oh, yeah.
And the other one, the eight little one? And that's, I fill mine every week.
What else, Peggy?
I saw the Coke machine.
I know, it's a fun one.
Well, I know, I saw it was removed, was that a choice on us, on the?
On me. And reason was, I met with Richard, and we started hearing the amount of hours that they had to put into them because they're not working the program.
Well, yeah, and they have to refund and everything.
So, we just decided that it was not worth the hours to have it there, and also that freed up space for, you know, like, a little monument going there, which I'll get out to everybody.
You had a shape of the dog?
Yes.
Jack.
Jack the dog. So, real quick, I don't even know about Jack the dog, but he's got more followers than I think anybody I ever met in my life, so. International baby, I don't know how it works, but yes, that's why we got rid of it. It just, Richard said Mike, it just.
Well, yeah, the items down there, it was one of the things where like, it was always like, it was either have something, or they ate the money, or a circuit breaker tripped, or a cold guy fried.
And then every time they ate the money, they would go to a tin to take up their time. It's, it's, yeah. Anything else?
The only question I have then is, are people going to be able to buy water and drinks?
Hershey's right there on the corner.
Right.
Or Nix's right now, yeah.
Okay. I agree, I mean, I agree with you, she could go.
Yeah. He's got a painting once, but they're cleared up. Because you can see the painter painted around what I missed.
And I think you may want to tell them, maybe you could go over the differential. We'll meet next week.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'll meet with the commissioners next week over the tax differential. As you know, we have a very good relationship with the Five Standing, and I'll be down with Mahoney, and we feel very confident there won't be any change. They support us, I talked to Commissioner Hutchins today on emergency across the way. But, we have their support, and they always say, what the beaches need, just let us know.
Well, I think that I've provided you everything, and then again, I'll give you a link to the Dropbox, because it's too big for me to send out, I tried sending it out to you anymore. But it's got my comments on the side of the PDF so that you can go right to the section one, okay? And then again, send me emails, because I'd love it, it's like a little game to play.
And the other question before, we kind of skipped around, I apologize, based off the agenda. Any other questions from our council? All right, take your time, we have everything, it's all detailed. I mean, you will not, you should appreciate the detail, it's in detail. She did an amazing job of notes. So, what I want to do now is open up the public comment. You need public comments? Stacy's back there. Burnus is here showing up in force today.
They're happy, so that's good.
That's right.
Come on, man, you're a bit. So, you don't expect that it will cost the town any more money? Like, we won't need to increase anything? We'll be operating, kind of like, you could say, my normal money that we have, you know that?
Absolutely. What we're looking at, though, is, we're just, we're adjusting, we're needed, we're moving. We're just looking at bringing, every item is a value, we're looking at it as a value. So, based off of the tax revenue, we don't believe, I mean, we're not going to.
Based off the tax revenue.
We're not, we're not, it's not going to cost us more, we're just going to improve our services.
But, what you said is generally right, but we're not increasing taxes, the tax revenue is not increasing, but the budget has grown due to other sources of revenue.
Of revenue, yes, not tax revenue.
Not tax, yeah.
Like, how we use our money.
Yes. So, do you have a reserve, more of a reserve this year than you had last year?
Well, because, you know, my concern all these years has really been, you know, what income or revenue does the town receive, you know, from being such a popular place, especially in the summer.
Right. So, when you look at that, right, we invest in our guests to be here, and really what you're looking at is, there is revenue from the beach. But more importantly, when people come here, they fall in love with our town, and they buy our, buy homes, they fix the homes up, the revenue goes up. So, you're just getting a transfer, for lack of a better word, of wealth, because people are seeing these houses on the market, or the houses that need work to be, you know, we just had another one torn down the other day, it was falling down. They're going to rebuild that house into a New Orleans-style home, it's going to be absolutely beautiful, and our revenue's going to go up, but that's because it came to the town because of one of the events.
My goal in life, don't cost me any more to live here.
No, no. Our goal is not to cost you any more.
No, and one more for clarity, Norma Jean. We have, because we have the beach, and because they do come here, there's two funds that are funded through that. That's the welcome waterfront impact fees for capital projects, which will help pay for those lights, we talked about the fifty thousand, okay? And then the EDC fund, which helps pay for programs like leases, community conservation, which are not tax dollars.
Yeah.
Those are revenue generated and brought in. So, just so you're aware, and from council's information, at the bottom of your notes, I showed you what those dollar amounts are.
Great question, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, if you don't have any other questions, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, absolutely.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Thank you.